Okay, opening the Committee on Health, Human Services and Homelessness for the purpose of hearing, hearing for agenda post for Thursday, February 11, 2011, 9:30 a.m. Agenda. The Chair again would like to highlight to all testifiers that signed in that we have a two-minute timeframe and to highlight to all those professional testifiers and department representatives that we have your testimony in front of us. So moving to the first bill HB 210 relating to the Reduction Emission Propensity Cigarette Program. We'd like to call on to the Hawaii State Fire Council. Okay, Gary, we can't hear you? Are you muted? We still can't hear you, but we have your testimony in support. Are you willing to rest on your testimony? Is that a yes? Okay, all right, thank you. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on to HB 308. I'd like to call on the Department of Human Services.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair and the members of the committee. I am Imari Hall on behalf of the Department of Human Services. DHS stands on its written testimony, providing comments and defers to the Department of Health. I will remain available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Department of Health?
Good morning Chair, members of the committee, Lauren Kim, Policy Director for the Department of Health. Thank you for submitting this bill. It's an intriguing idea that we support further conversation and exploration. I'll mention, emphasize one thing I said in my testimony that there's an opportunity for Hawaii to grow its share of the federal pie. And we look forward to conversations with the legislature on how to make that happen. And this may be a good place to start. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Hawaii Primary Care Association in support. Members, any questions? Okay, Vice Chair?
Hi, my question is for the Department of Human Services. Actually, Department of Health, I think that would be better. Do you know how much money such a program would cost?
Well, one FTE I'm thinking would be at least an SR 26, so a salary of maybe, oops. Sorry, I have to stop my video. If we start with one FTE, that person would need to be probably a planner six or a program specialist six, which is an SR 26. Salary and fringe is probably about $120,000. I think starting from there, that's probably a good starting point for this. Plus whatever office supplies are necessary, but it does start with a dedicated FTE who knows the ins and outs of federal appropriations, grants, technical assistance, as well as the players in our community, both private and public, who regularly apply for grants and who they bring their collective wisdom together. So at least one, starting with at least one FTE.
So who currently is doing the program for grant writing?
In the Department of Health, it is decentralized. At one point when grant programs were substantially simpler, maybe a decade or two ago, my office, the Office of Planning, Policy and Program Development, provided centralized technical resource, technical assistance for grant writing. Over time, as we've seen cooperative agreements reissued every year, the need for responding to new grants has diminished. And we basically decentralized and federalized grants renewal, I think is an accurate term. There is, there are recently more competitive grants, and I think that's the real opportunity. But at present, we do not have an in-house expert on grants. We have several administrative officers who manage our grants. We are still successful with the odd competitive grant, but certainly our chances to attract more competitive grants, discretionary grants as opposed to mandatory grants and cooperative agreements would be increased if we had somebody really focused on this. This really is a part, writing a compelling grant opportunity and paying attention to prevailing trends across the country.
Thank you so much. No further questions.
Okay.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to HB 311 relating to the Nursing Facility Sustainability Program. The Department of Human Services?
Hi, good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. I'm Judamore Peterson, MedQuest Administrator for Department of Human Services. We stand in strong support of our written, of this bill, and we stand on our written testimony. I would like to note that we do support the amendment proposed by HAH. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, HAH Healthcare Association Hawaii?
Thank you Chair and members of the committee. My name is Hilton Raifull, President CEO of the Healthcare Association of Hawaii. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in strong support of this bill, which authorizes nursing sustainability program for additional two years. This program works by assessing a fee on nursing facilities, which allows the state to bring meaningful amounts of federal dollars without using any federal funds. We have worked closely over the past few months in collaboration with MedQuest Division on this program and appreciate our continued partnership. We are asking for one amendment to allow nursing facilities some additional time to pay the assessed fee in MedQuest, which would standardize the timeframe with the hospital's sustainability program. We ask for your support in passing this bill out of your committee with a requested amendment. We would like to note that this provider program is different and separate from the proposed insurance fee programs. And we do not have any involvement or position on legislating, legislation relating to that program. Thank you for the opportunity to support this bill.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Queens Health Systems?
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Colette Masunaga. On behalf of the Queens Health Systems, we'll stand in support of our testimony for the Nursing Facility Sustainability Program. We do want to note that this program will significantly help our post-acute care partners in terms of being able to provide continuing care for patients who are, who no longer need acute care services. The Queens Medical Center Punch Bowl currently has an average waitlist of over 35 patients a day who are waiting to get to a post-acute care facility. So we really appreciate the committee's consideration of this bill and concur with the testimony provided by the Healthcare Association.
Thank you. We have Hawaii Primary Care Association in support, Kalakaua Gardens in support, Aloha Nursing Rehab Center support, Kula Hospital support, Lanai Community Hospital support, McLaren's Teaching, St. Francis support, Ohana Pacific in support, P'ul'au Ma'kaha in support, Kristin Zabo and Alisa Rosello in support. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on to HB 339 relating to family court. Would like to call up the state of Hawaii judiciary. Oh, sorry, in opposition and Kanichi Busaki individual in support. Okay, members, there's no one to answer questions, so we'll move on to HB 490 relating to crimes against seniors. Department of Human Services?
Aloha Chair, this is Daisy Hartsfield, Administrator for the Social Services Division. The Adult Protective Client Services Branch submitted testimony in support of this bill, and we're going to stand by that testimony. We'll be available for any questions. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Thank you seeing this morning. Okay, Office of the Public Defender?
Hi, good morning Chair Yomani, Vice Chair Tam. My name is Lee Hayakawa. I am the First Deputy at the Office of the Public Defender. The Office of the Public Defender opposes in part and supports in part HB number 490. While the Office of the Public Defender opposes the creation of special victim classes, we do support the amendment that includes the state of mind element in HRS 708, 812.55. Otherwise, we will stand on our testimony and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Maui Department of Prosecuting Attorney?
Thank you Chair, good morning Chair Yomani, Chair Tam and the Committee on Health, Human Services and Homelessness. My name is Robert Rivera. I'm the Second Deputy Prosecutor for Maui County Prosecutors. Initially, we authored this bill last year and this year we helped draft it with some change in some of our provisions. Primarily, there's a concern with respect to the intent of the offender. So what we did is we did change it to, from being the strict liability bill to the person should have known or reasonably should have known the age or the intended circumstances of the victims. It's been our experience and this is in working closely with private nonprofit agencies who advocate for the protection of our kapuna that against our kapuna have increased. And unfortunately, this is not, this is nationwide and not just Maui. So the purpose of this bill is to afford a greater protections and offer a greater deterrent to those who would target our senior citizens with both crimes of violence as well as property crimes. The other thing I did, I did want to mention is that this bill does not require any funding. So that, that should be something that, you know, should not be of concern to, to the legislature. Other than that, we do stand by what we have submitted in our written testimony. And again, thank you for this opportunity. We are in strong support of this bill. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. APCS Branch, the DHS?
Good morning Chair, this is Lisa Almodor, Administrator for Adult Protective and Community Services Branch.
Okay, please proceed.
So we, we just stand in our written testimony.
Okay, thank you. Honolulu Police Department?
Good afternoon, good morning Chair, this is Captain Kunishimo at the Honolulu Police Department. We're going to stand on our written testimony in support here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have testimony submitted by County of Kauai Office of the Prosecuting Attorney in support, Executive Office of Ejing in support, Maui Police Department in support, and Mary Gilmeister in support. Members, any questions? Vice Chair?
Thank you so much Chair. My question is for Robert Rivera from Maui Prosecutor's Office. So you mentioned that this would offer deterrence to crimes against seniors. Do you have any statistics that show that this would, based on our previous law?
Well, because this hasn't been enacted, we don't have any statistics that would show you. It's anticipated though, in enacting like bills for protected citizens or for certain protected individuals, which we would include our seniors in, it has caused or has provided some deterrent, we believe. As far as numbers go, I can check, I have to go through numbers with the police department as well as with, with our own office. I don't have anything right now, but I can see if we can provide that for you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to HB 706 relating to the issuance of special purpose revenue bonds to assist Wahihua General Hospital. Wahihua General Hospital?
Thank you Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Brian Cunningham. I serve as the CEO for Wahihua General Hospital. And on behalf of Wahihua General Hospital and the communities we serve, I stand by my written testimony in support of HB 706 relating to the issuance of special purpose revenue bonds to assist Wahihua General Hospital. I would add that, you know, it's no secret that Wahihua General Hospital has struggled over the last decade to find their place in the continuum of care as larger hospitals build up down in the population centers. We spent the last several years restructuring our operation and starting to partner with some of these larger organizations so that we can continue to serve the island and the state of Hawaii. As an example, we recently opened the only on-island sub-acute COVID isolation wing. We're very proud to be able to help our island, help our kapuna in the various nursing homes to prevent further outbreaks, literally saving lives by transitioning, transferring these residents into our sub-acute unit. We look forward to other opportunities to serve the island. We have a strong strategic plan for the future. The Ko'origi project will be coming online in a few years and some other projects we have as part of our strategic future. But our imminent future due to COVID has really put a big challenge on our financial situation. So we're asking through this bill for a special purpose revenue bond to restructure our debt. We inherited a significant debt in the past and we look to restructure that, pay that down so that we can get to this bright future ahead of us. We have many strategic partners we're working with, including Queens Health System. So we're confident in our ability to get to this future. We need this committee's help with this special purpose revenue bond, and I just would thank you for, for all we serve.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have testimony from Budget and Finance providing comments and ILW Local 142 International Longshoreman in support. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on to HB 728 relating to statewide health planning. The Office of Language Access?
Good morning Chair Yomani, Vice Chair Tam and committee members. Afirak Membrunren, Executive Director of the Office of Language Access. We stand on our written testimony, offering comments on this measure. We would like to note that we understand the current financial situation and its impact to our government, which is including Ola. To address this issue, Ola did have a good conversation with BNF and we are currently working with the Department of Health because of our request for an adjustment to the executive budget in term of the budget reduction instead of the budget elimination as proposed. Under this proposal, we requesting to add to FTE back to STS 90H, which is Ola program. This number is the bare minimum to ensure that Ola will maintain its status as an agency and to carry on its mandated function under 321(c)(6). So thank you for the opportunity to testify and I will be available for any question the committee may have. Thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you AP. Department of Human Services?
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members, Joseph Campos, Deputy Director, Department of Human Services. We stand on our written testimony, offering comments and defer to the Office of Language Access and Department of Health. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights? Amy?
Thank you. My name's Amy Agbayani and I'm co-chair with Pat McManaman, who's also on the call of the Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights. Just a few comments first, thank you. We support this measure. Two, language access is a civil right. And three, Ola is needed by the state for the state to comply and provide essential services to a very vulnerable community. And just the last sentence, if miscommunication during, during the pandemic has been a problem, communication in English has been a problem. You can just imagine how difficult it is if you are a limited English speaker and you don't get any information at all, or the information is inaccurate or, or not, or slow. So please, we, we think this is a way to address the budgetary needs of, of the state and serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights?
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair and Committee Members for this opportunity to testify on behalf of the Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights. My name is Catherine Chen. I'm here along with my co-chair Eliza Ryan Gill in support of HR 728. In addition to our written comments, I just want to take this time to implore everyone to consider what it would mean for our state to further turn our backs to the limited English proficiency community now. State agencies have failed to comply with the clear language laws and numerous lawsuits over the years, including state paid settlements have made that clear. And this pandemic has made it clear. Through my work as an immigration attorney at the Medical Legal Partnership, I have heard story after story of clients who did not receive timely public health messages or timely contact tracing messages or who could not access unemployment insurance that they were eligible for and pay taxes into solely because of language access. Our current crisis is far from over. It takes all of us to do our part to enter a post-pandemic world, but we cannot do that if vaccine rollout and future public health messages do not reach our LEP communities quickly and accurately. We must affirm our commitment to language access or we will all be weaker for it in this next critical chapter and paying for it after that fact. We stand on our comments and support. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Former Director Pat McManaman?
Hi, thank you Chair. We stand in strong support of this particular bill. I would just note that I, the community in support of your bill much prefers it over the Senate Bill called 30. You know, we thank you for including provisions of this bill for Ola also to leverage funding. Just a general inquiry if that provision then would require a special fund to be established so that the money goes to Ola as opposed to being deposited into the state general fund. But I leave that to you and your counselors to sort, sort through that particular issue. I just want to strongly echo Amy's testimony, Catherine Chen's eloquent testimony about the need and how seen in the pandemic, just unspeakable instances of people being denied benefits, being denied healthcare freedoms directed because of the lack of a clear LEP guidance provided by Department of Health, Department of Labor, HAIMA and other entities is truly problematic. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lisa Ryan Gill?
Thank you Chair and Vice Chair Members of the Committee. My name is Eliza Ryan Gill and I'm testifying in support in my role as co-coordinator for the Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights, but also as the advocacy chair for the legal clinic which serves low-income immigrants in our state. And we are reiterating how critical it is that we maintain the independence and operability of this agency to be able to hold all of our agencies accountable in providing language access, which as Pat and Amy have very clearly said, is a civil rights issue, but it is also a very tangible issue. I helped administer about a half a million dollars in the city provided cares funding over the fall to limited English proficient communities who were not receiving support, nor were they abiding by COVID protocols because they did not have the right access to information in their own language. And we do this at our own peril. If we want our state to recover its economy, it means we need to get our numbers and communities spread down, which means that all members of our community need to have access to vaccination and proper public health information. Thank you so much and we stand in strong support.
Thank you. Department of Health?
Good morning Chair, Lauren Kim, Department of Health, Policy Director. First of all, let me say that the Department of Health endorses and corroborates the testimony of the Office of Language Access regarding activities we're undertaking to assure the office persists and Language Access Authority is maintained in the state of Hawaii. It is a basic civil right and it is a means to an end towards our goal of health equity. Secondly, we take no position on the particulars of this bill, but do urge that some vehicle keep moving. We are obliged by policy to, to support the governor's executive buying and budget proposal. And in the event that that trajectory isn't altered, we think it is important to have a standalone vehicle post-budget decking to have a contingency plan. And so the value of this bill moving forward is that regardless of the contents, but we do make some suggestions in our testimony. The last comment I'll make is, we had an internal conversation about the scope of the title and recommend, and we'll work with the committee to propose some wording that assures health planning and language access may be equally present to assure that it meets the constitutionality of the title. That was just a minor concern that we had just to make sure that we have all our bases covered. Other than that, I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have testimony provided by Tarina Wong in support, Thaddeus Pham in support, Christie McPherson in support. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on to HB 729 relating to homeless. Governor's Coordinator on Homelessness, Mr. Morrisier?
Hey, good morning Chair, Scott Morrisier, Governor's Corner on Homelessness. I support the intent of this measure and really appreciate the efforts to sustain core homeless services using Medicaid funds. I also want to note that DHS has recently obtained a waiver to use Medicaid funds for certain supportive housing services. And also note that funding for the core homeless services described in the bill are currently included in House Bill 200, the executive budget. I signed in my written comments and are available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Department of Human Services?
Hi, good morning and thank you for the opportunity to testify on this, on this measure. We stand in support of our testimony, offering comments. We appreciate the intent to, to provide funding for the Homeless Programs Office. We will note that it is included, the funding is included in the executive budget. We appreciate the fact that there's another vehicle to maintain this funding should that the executive budget change and those reductions happen. Also note that by taking money from the Medicaid program, it, it would just increase the, the need on the Medicaid program. So just, I wanted to note that. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Members, we have testimony from the Budget and Finance Providing Comments, testimony from Hawaii Health Harm Reduction Center in support, Christie McPherson in support. testimony from Hawaii Health Harm Reduction Center in support, Kristi McPherson in support. Members, any questions? Representative Ward?
DHS, please. In your testimony, paragraph four says, "The demand for homeless services is expected to significantly increase due to the economic impact of COVID nineteen pandemic." The question is, what are the numbers? And if it hasn't already happened, will it now happen? Because we've been into it for almost a year.
Thank you for that question. I'm actually going to ask if Mr. Morishige would be able to.
Thank you, Judy. I'm happy to answer the question, Representative Ward. So if we look at historical data about what happened the last time the state faced a major economic recession, which was in two thousand nine, we know that for several years after, between two thousand nine and twenty sixteen, there was a thirty seven percent increase in homelessness statewide and increase of over twenty one hundred people. We do not know the exact numbers for this current situation, but if we look at the historical context, it's very likely that we'll see a similar prolonged increase in homelessness over several years and probably at a much greater level of magnitude due to the significantly higher rates of unemployment and greater severity of the economic situation we're facing now.
But Mr. Morishige, after almost a year, we still don't know the amount of increase that is taking place?
So, Representative Ward, thank you for that question. I think the challenge is that there's a significant amount of federal aid through emergency solutions grant programs from HUD as well as federal cares money that have helped to keep people in their homes to minimize the impact on homelessness in the short term. I think the increases we're likely to see are going to be in the longer term. And again, it's not going to be a one-time spike. I think those increases are likely to occur over a period of time. So because of that projected increase, I think it's very critical that we sustain the current level of services at minimum to help address the situation.
You're suggesting then the eviction moratorium when that's lifted may be a potential spike?
Thank you.
Mr. Morishige, the eviction moratorium or am I not on audio? I think.
Yes, you are.
You are. I think perhaps Scott lost his, lost his video. He dropped it off. I think it's both a combination of the eviction moratorium and the rental assistance. I think that that combination of both preventive measures are sort of differing and are very extremely helpful for the community currently. But as Mr. Morishige pointed out, it is, once those are gone, then unless we see a rapid increase in the economy, then we're likely to see the effects of the unemployment, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to HB seven three zero relating to Health and Human Services. Governor's Coordinator on Homelessness. Okay, if you can jump on before we get through all the testifiers, Department of Human Services.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. We stand on our written testimony, offering comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Department of Health.
Hello, Chair. Lauren Kim for the Department of Health. We support the intent and submit some friendly amendments. We believe there may be some unintended consequences with regard to subspecialty providers that deal with contact. We support the intent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. State Procurement Office.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. The State Procurement Office stands in written testimony opposing the amendments to Chapter one oh three F. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then we have Linda Elto in opposition. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Chair has quick questions for Department of Health. Mr. Kim, I guess there was a question that came up during the, you know, as we looked at the finances, there was some, at least some discussion at one point regarding that providers that were doing state services that may be to Medicaid qualified patients, right, which would be paid through general funds, could also then potentially be leveraged or maybe more appropriately done through the court, them through the health services of Quests, which would then save that needed dollars to be used for other needed governmental services. Is there an estimate on the amount of potential money left on the table?
I don't have that calculation. I'll work with the Medicaid Agency to figure out if we can get to at least a ballpark figure and the extent of the opportunity, if there's any.
I am aware of the concern that, you know, we do have a number of small providers that getting Medicaid approval is a long process. However, some providers have gone through that process, right? Once they become Medicaid approved, does that mean other revenue streams like federal direct grant programs would then be potentially available? Either you or Judy, if you guys have insight on that. Would that make them potentially available to ask for those type of block grants rather than only seeking state funding?
From the, can you just, I'm sorry, I apologize. Could you restate that?
Yeah, so sorry. So by providers becoming Medicaid approved, does that mean they're now become eligible to apply for other federal direct grants that they may not if they're not Medicaid approved?
Well, I'm not aware of any, I shouldn't say, well, I'm not aware of any specific grants that would be available to Medicaid providers that aren't available to others. Although there are, at times in history, there have been opportunities where, you know, specific grants do come up and they have a requirement that they be, they be serving a low income population. So it is possible that there may be some of those in the future.
Does, when the federal government looks at the qualifications for, you know, like for competitive grants or programs, does it, an entity or providers Medicaid approval or being part of the Medicaid system enhance their scoring to potentially get the award?
I think their ability to, if you're looking at the healthcare providers themselves, I've seen in, historically, I've seen a few examples where being enrolled with Medicaid or partnering with Medicaid has been one of the criteria. The Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Innovation frequently puts out payer innovation grants where communities can apply and they have an expectation that they partner with the Medicaid agency. So there are examples like that. A lot of those are targeting, like for example, hospitals or primary care groups, et cetera. So, and then I've also seen where there is an expectation that the, like for example, the Department of Health would partner with us. And we have a strong working relationship and have done that. And as is noted with one of the earlier bills, if there was a grant coordinator, you know, that's an example where something like that could happen. But that's all I'm aware of for as far as, you know, actual Medicaid, becoming a Medicaid provider.
Well, thank you. Okay, moving on to HB seven seven eight relating to Health. Office of the Public Defender.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is James Tava. I'm with the Public Defender's Office. You know, we may be misreading this bill, but this measure seems to suggest that the parents need not appear at the hearings to testify on the issue of whether the person is, you know, eminently dangerous to sell for others and that their state, written statements can be introduced at court in lieu of live testimony. And if this is so, these hearsay statements will not be made admissible under the Hawaii Rules of Evidence as well as the confrontation clause of the US and Hawaii Constitution. So if this is the, I know the intent of the bill is probably to get the parent's statements, but they must still appear in court for this to survive here. Otherwise, we'll stand on our written testimony in opposition and I'll be available for comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Maui County AHEC.
Aloha, my name is Rosie Davis. I'm coming as a director of my county area health education center and as a mother going through a thirty three year old daughter that lives here in Oahu. I live off island, so I support seven seven eight. We do not have the resource that would be needed to take someone that is addicted to a prescribed drug to have medically detox off island. It would have to be here in Honolulu. I'm actually here trying to get her into a place. HB seven seven eight would do that. We are like everybody else, you know, a lot of times in the positions that we have, they try and sweep this under the rug. You know, but we're like, we're a regular family. I have five other children. We're all community contributors, volunteers in the community, wherever we're at. My oldest daughter is a physician assistant. My youngest daughter is going to take her MCAT, have a correctional officer, one son and a retired twenty year veteran of a Marine son. So with that being said, our family have been struggling. We need help. We believe that this bill would provide that opportunity. So we stand by our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Queens Health Systems.
Lo Ha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Kuleth Masanaga for the Queens Health Systems. We just offered comments noting that our providers do collect collateral information on patients and just want to ensure that anything that passes wouldn't delay patient care for those at our facility. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Department of Health.
Good morning, Chair and Members of the House Committee. My name is Brenda Bowers Smith and I'm the Adult Mental Health Division's Court Evaluation Branch Chief, speaking on behalf of the Department of Health. And we appreciate the opportunity to testify today on this bill. The department stands on its testimony commenting on the measure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and to note that the Hawaii Disability Rate Center provided comments, Inomaka provided testimony support, and Faith Tuipolo two in support. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Representative Ha, please proceed.
Mr. Chair, can I have the Public Defender's Office, Mr. Tabe?
Yes.
Good morning, Mr. Tabe. Thank you for your verbal testimony along with your written testimony. You heard the testimony of Ms. Davis from Maui. You know, I guess I understand the, you know, I'm an attorney, so I understand the rules of evidence. But that said, in this day and age, now that we're dealing with COVID and we're dealing with Zoom meetings and all of that, isn't the judiciary going in that direction? So why couldn't a parent just, you know, perhaps just participate remotely instead of, why are you, are you, is it the position of the Public Defender's Office that the parent must in fact be in person in the courtroom?
Yes, right now, well, that's the, our position at this time is that trials, which technically would be like a trial of the involuntary commitment hearings or the assisted community treatment hearings, the witness should, the patient or the subject of the petition should be able to confront them in person. Otherwise, you know, we're going to run that simply slope or we're going to have witnesses being testified, testifying remotely and we want them in the courtroom so we could confront them. It's also, when they're in person, it's, we know that they're not using any aids to testify because, you know, we've had, you know, on these remote hearings, we know that witnesses may rely on on certain things to refresh their memory improperly. We want them in court so the judge could judge their credibility in person. So at this time, these individuals, I think, should be in court if they're trying to, especially on the involuntary commitment hearings, if they're trying to confine a person at this time.
Okay, but again, the testimony of Ms. Davis was clearly, you know, she's not living on Oahu. Her daughter is here and, you know, because this continues to be an issue for our neighbor Islanders, is access to justice and travel expenses, et cetera. So I'm just, and again, I'm not, we don't have any testimony from any, from the judiciary or from the prosecuting attorney's office, but it was my understanding that trials are actually being conducted remotely. Not true?
Trials are conducted in person.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to HB nine eight six. Department of Health.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Matthew Shim. I'm Chief of the Family Health Services Division, Department of Health. The department stands on its written testimony in strong support of this measure and we're available for comments or any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities.
Good morning, Chair Yamada and Committee Members. My name is Chase Silver. I am the legislative liaison for the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. The Hawaii State Council is also part of the ACT Early Project and early screening tools are an incredibly important task for this project. Early intervention allows us to catch possible developmental delays as early as possible, which increases the likelihood of individuals with possible delays being capable of independency in their lifetime. This would improve their quality of life and would also make them less likely to need state assistance in the future. So for these reasons, the State Council supports this measure. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony.
Okay, thank you. Noting that we have the Disabilities and Communication Access Board in support, Executive Office of Early Learning in support and Early Childhood Association Strategies in support. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to HB nine eight seven relating to Hearing and Vision Program. Department of Health.
Good morning, Chair. Again, the department stands on its written testimony in strong support and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities.
Good morning, Chair. Again, we would just like this, stand on our written testimony and support and stress the importance of early intervention tools. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Eddy. Is he on? No? Okay, my president. Okay, members noting that the Disability Communication Access Board in support, Executive Office of Early Learning in support, Early Childhood Association's Action Strategies in support. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to HB one 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 three relating to non-general funds. Department of Human Services.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members, Joseph Campos, Deputy Director, Department of Human Services. The Department of Human Services stands on its written testimony, providing comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to HB one two nine seven relating to state finances. We have a lot of testimony here. Attorney General.
Good morning. I am Randall Michiyama, Deputy Attorney General. We have provided our written comments and I'm available for your questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, DCCA.
Yes, Chair, Vice Chair, Dean Hazama for DCCA will stand on my written testimony submitted to this committee.
Okay, thank you. Employee Retirement Systems. ERS. Okay, Hawaii Tourism Authority. Okay, DLNR.
Yeah, good morning. This is David Smith, Administrator Division for Senior Wildlife and the department will stand on. and uh, the department will stand on its written testimony. Thank you.
Okay, in opposition. Okay, uh, Department of Education.
Good morning, Chair Yamani, Vice Chair, Chair Tam, Members of the Committee, Brian Halitz, Department, uh, DOE CFO, testifying on behalf of Superintendent. Apologize that our written testimony was not explicit. The department is test- testifying in opposition to this bill and we stand on our written testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Department of Defense.
Good morning, Chair. The department stands on its written testimony and available for questions.
Awesome, thank you. Department of Taxation. No, no Director, okay. Uh, Department of Budget and Finance, oh, sorry, provided comment. University of Hawaii.
Hi, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Triple H Committee, Michael Ng for University of Hawaii. We stand on our written testimony in opposition.
Okay, thank you, Mikey. Uh, Department of Human Services.
Hey, good morning. This is Judy Moore Peterson, testifying on behalf of the Department of Human Services. We stand on our written testimony in opposition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Department of Transportation.
Uh, good morning, uh, Chair Yamani and Members of the Committee, Jade Putai for DOT. Uh, we stand on our submitted written testimony in strong opposition. Uh, in general, diverting our special funds will substantially impair and degrade our ability to meet our mission. Thank you.
Okay, I see you, Director. Okay, Department of Health.
Aloha, Aloha Chair. This is Lauren Kim again, Department of Health. The department stands on its testimony offering comments, pointing out that unless there's a dollar-for-dollar uh, supplantation of special funds, we will be unable to meet our mission and there will be immediate impacts to community and individual health and we are available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Healthcare Association Hawaii.
Um, thank you, Chair and Members of the Committee for allowing us to provide our strong concerns on this measure. My name is Hilton Rathell, President, CEO of the Healthcare Association of Hawaii. We oppose this measure because it would eliminate the exemption that the hospital and nursing facility sustainability program special funds have from funding the central services fund. We understand the legislature is having a difficult decisions on the budget. We understand very well how challenging the current fiscal environment is. However, we know that eliminating this exemption, um, the state will not be able to maximize federal Medicaid funds and will further strain hospital and nursing facility finances. We ask you to maintain the exemption for the hospital and nursing facility funds to avoid these issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, all right, let me go. Reynolds Recycling. Okay. Hawaii Primary Care Association.
Okay. Yep.
Go ahead.
I'm here, Kyle, and I'm the CEO of the Hawaii Primary Care Association. The HBC works with all fifteen federally qualified health centers across the state of Hawaii. Together, Hawaii's FMTs provide care to over one hundred sixty thousand of Hawaii's underserved residents and we stand in our, on our written testimony in opposition to HB one, two, nine, seven. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Queens Health Systems.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Kulep Masanaga for the Queens Health Systems. Uh, we'll stand in our testimony in opposition of HB twelve ninety-seven and concur the testimony provided from the Healthcare Association. Uh, we did want to note that in Queens is the only one-level trauma center in the state of Hawaii serving also the Greater Pacific Basin and we have concerns about the impact um, on the trauma specialist fund um, and what it would mean for trauma services for our state. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have testimonies submitted by, like, Hawaii Health Systems Corporation in opposition, Kalakaua Gardens in opposition, Kula Hospital in opposition, Lanai Community Hospital in opposition, Hana Health opposition, Kokoa, Kalih Valley opposition, Lanai Community Health Center in opposition, Ynai Coast Comprehensive Health Center in opposition, American Cancer Society in opposition, uh, Hawaii Pacific Health in opposition and Joel Ramos and Lynn Wilkins in opposition. Members, any questions? Representative Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Mr. Williams, either of the, or someone from the ERS? There's someone there.
They did not provide, they were
They gave a good testimony.
Called upon, they did not speak, so.
Yeah, they said that they're gonna lose some IRS credibility. I want to see if that's a could or a should. But, okay, that, that, that's all I had to ask, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, um.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Representative Ha, please proceed.
May I? May I ask?
Please go ahead.
University of Hawaii, Mr. Ng.
Yes, Representative.
Good morning, Mr. Ng. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your written and your verbal testimony. Um, it seems, you know, when reading your written testimony, that there are some very serious consequences if this bill were to pass, um, specifically with some of the special funds that UH administers, um, the, the cancer research special fund. Can you please elaborate on that?
Yeah, so um, I think a lot of departments are talking about the central services assessment portion of it. Um, that does affect us, but specifically, there's other portions of the bill that um, take the tobacco tax, uh, the portion of the tobacco tax that goes to a bunch of special funds um, and eliminates that and puts it in the general fund. Um, I know there's a provision for the Department of Health, those special funds to receive general funds, but there's no provision like that for the Cancer Research Center. So um, pretty much that revenue stream of about like thirteen million dollars.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ng. Something's happening with your audio. I'm, I'm unable to hear you. Can you hear me, Mr. Ng?
Mikey, you each gotta spend better, more money on your broadband. Maybe you gotta walk outside or something? No, okay. Why you wanna ask that question to somebody else?
Well, I'd actually like to speak to Department of Education, Mr. Halit.
Yes, hello. I'm here.
Good morning, Mr. Halit. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your verbal and written testimony. One of the things that struck me in uh, the written testimony was the effect, the impact on uh, on the Department of Education's funds with respect to the Hawaii Three R School Improvement Fund and the After School Plus Program revolving funds. Could you please elaborate?
Well, I, I think we have similar concerns for, for all six of the funds that, that in, in, it, with the check-off money in particular for, for the Three Rs Fund, we're talking about uh, approximately eighty thousand dollars a year that taxpayers check off uh, on their tax forms uh, with the intention that it go to support school R and, R and M. For, for A+, uh, we have revenues of about eight point five million dollars a year on an entirely self-sufficient or self-funded program, requires no general fund supports at this time. This would have an impact of, of shifting approximately four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a year away from that program, which would translate into a need to increase fees or seek general fund subsidies.
Okay, and then, Mr. Halit, what is the School Food Service Special Fund?
Uh, that's basically where, where the school lunch charges are deposited. Uh, this, this program is funded by a combination of general funds, federal funds and, and the actual charges to students. Uh, that, that fund is, brings in approximately twenty-four million dollars a year in revenues. Uh, that would translate into about a one point two million dollar shift of those revenues away from the program, which this program unfortunately, you, you probably already know is facing approximately twenty-five million dollar deficit this year. It would only compound that problem.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Halit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, Chair has some questions. Uh, um, I'll ask Mr. Halif of DOE since uh, you're bravely answered Representative Ha's question. So the, the Chair has a question. Um, currently with these programs that fall under DOE, um, who pays for the administrative costs on services? And salary?
Well, for, for a self-sufficient program like A+, um, the, the, the A+ program funds the, the support and, and for the program. Um, we do have some expense associated with maybe our accounting or our budgeting functions, um, but we don't tend to spend a particularly large amount of time of our time dedicated to servicing those funds in particular. Certainly not four hundred thousand dollars worth for, for the A+ program or, or food service one point two million.
So the four hundred thousand is based off of the five percent?
Yes, yes, that's what I'm estimating.
So, um, was the Department of Education and other departments um, uh, required to do ten percent uh, budget restrictions as designated by the governor?
Yes, yes, we were.
So, when you have those ten percent reductions, did it affect any of these services that are, are listed here with, um, in this bill?
School food service, summer school, textbooks, A+, R and M and, and SEFI. Uh, not, not directly and indirectly, of, of course.
Directly, just like the payment for the fund that this bill is trying to gather, right? So, uh, did you guys oppose um, or refuse to do the ten percent mandated reduction?
We, we, we have a very complicated situation. Uh, we were initially subject to the ten percent program review reduction was, was a hundred sixty-four million dollars. Uh, you, you may have noted that in, in recent weeks, that's been adjusted to a minus two point five percent or forty-one million dollar reduction. Uh, but the complication comes in the form of a hundred million dollar reduction, non-recurring from the current year carried over into the both years of the biennium. We are still faced with a hundred forty-one million dollar cut to our operating budget at this time.
Absolutely, right. As, as well as what, what, what is presented by the governor's budget. But again, back to the issue about the five and ten percent reductions as well as the uh, requested uh, planning for reductions. Um, uh, again, even with, and, and I guess I could ask every department that opposed, um, who pays for the salaries and the benefits and the resources to administer these special funds? Is that basically the taxpayer regarding to GF in, like you said, in, in direct way?
I, I, I think it's, it's a combination of the program pay for their, their own overhead costs, uh, being self-sufficient and there is a degree of general funded support provided by, for example, budget and accounting. Um, but again, it's, it's, it's a fraction of, of what five percent would translate to for these funds. And, and that's why in our testimony, we, we questioned, you know, that level of, of assessment against these programs.
So philosophically then, when we have these special programs with, that collect funds, um, is there already written within those agreements that the administration of those funds be charged to the fund? Or is it assumed that the taxpayers will pay for those programs? Because these were exempted, right, out of the central services?
Yeah, I, I, I think because they're exempted, it's, it's, you know, it was assumed that, that it would be funded, yeah.
Okay, now, I, I know there's a lot of concerns by, expressed by several of the departments in, in exactly what services they get out of the central service expenses. Um, but has that been in, in, are you aware of it? Um, that, that has been looked at internally?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not aware of an explicit review of, or estimate of what those costs would be.
Okay, so, uh, I, I, so just to clarify, I know I'm sorry to pick on DOE, but so, just to clarify, you guys have accepted the governor's ten percent um, spending restrictions over the last, I think, three years? Or is it four years? Um, however, the legislatively requiring that they pay for the services used to administer these funds, you guys are all in strong opposition. Is that correct?
Uh, e- e- essentially targeting these particular programs, yes. Yes, it's more of an equity issue from a lens of these particular programs.
Okay, so, okay, ten percent versus five, okay.
But, but these, these programs were not subject to ten percent. You know, only, only our EDN two and three hundred, our administrative overhead was, was a sense, in a sense, assessed that ten percent over the, the restriction over the last few years.
Okay, thank you. Um, Chair has question for Department of Health. Mr. Kim?
Yes, Chair. How can I help you?
Okay, sorry, thank you. So, you know, on the um, the removal of the trauma special fund, yeah? Currently, um, does the money go into state services or does it go to county services?
Uh, a mixture of both. So, uh, an example of, of trauma funding would be supporting the Queens Medical Center Trauma Program. Uh, it's a direct contract from the department to Queens Medical Center and I would encourage Queens to discuss the value of these monies to them and their ability to maintain their uh, trauma level uh, in part because of the assistance from the Department of Health Trauma System Special Fund.
Okay, I, I think if I recall, looking at all the special funds and I looked at tons because both departments, this one currently has what, about seven million dollars?
That is the cash balance that is, that may not reflect encumbrances.
Okay, now, out of the seven million dollars, how many go to counties?
To counties?
Yeah.
I, I'll need to check, but my, my understanding, and it may be incomplete, is that they go more to individual hospitals or hospital systems rather than county governments per se, for example, mayors and county councils. Our, our contracts are, are very likely with hospitals or health systems.
And in light of potential future discussions regarding the status of EMS, um, this is tied into any of, any of changes that might incur on that, right? Is that correct?
It is a, we, we see uh, emergency medical services, trauma and injury prevention as a continuum of primary prevention. So they are, all impact each other for our, our community safety, yes.
Okay, and another question regarding the, um, that was brought up earlier by another testifier regarding the uh, tobacco fund. Uh, currently, how much is in that fund, the cigarette tax?
Oh, in, um, one sec. It'll take me a bit to bring up that spreadsheet. I'm sorry, I don't have it already open.
About ninety million dollars?
Like, um, if, if that's the number that you have in front of you, that is most likely the cash balances of general.
I'm kinda, I'm using my memory and it get old, right?
That sounds about uh, of magnitude, but again, that reflects a cash balance at a, at a point in time, not necessarily the encumbrances, the revenues and the carryover balances we need to continue program operations and, and assure continuity on, say, July first.
Okay, so, a- and regarding the cigarette tax and uh, I, I guess in its inception, it, the money was supposed to be put there in order to administer and ensure that uh, we did tobacco cessation?
Correct. That was its original, uh, that was part of its original um, legislative purpose was uh, tobacco cessation.
A- and, and does Department of Health feel it's been successful?
Well, we um, are proud of the fact that we have some of the lowest uh, teen and adult smoking, combustible smoking rates in the country. Uh, youth vaping presents, is a new challenge for us, but again, we would let our, the results of our very strong anti-tobacco and anti-smoking programs speak for themselves.
Okay, so if, if that money is sitting there at that amount during, due to the fiscal budget situation that we're having, do you think then that some of that money then should be used to administer Department of Health Services and a public health uh, format?
Um, our work is never done and uh, resources that can contribute to our overall mission would be appreciated. We would just need to analyze the effect of whether this takes away resources from some other worthy program. But uh, there is always more work to be done on primary prevention, cigarette smoking, combustible cigarette smoking in particular is the number one preventable cause of premature death. We all have a ways to go. Uh, the industry is, is evolving um, very cleverly to, both legally and in their marketing. And so it's not something, we, we can't just rest on our laurels and more resources will always help us uh, to fight the good fight. So, for the legislature, we are very open to those suspensions.
Okay, but you're sitting on millions of, tens of millions of dollars potentially, right?
There are tens of millions of dollars um, that move in and out. I just, I would encourage the legislature uh, not to look at this as a point in time cash balance that is a dynamic special fund. Money goes in, money goes out at any given time. Um, it's, it's up and down. Um, but uh, we, it is public funds and we are open to uh, any scrutiny or accounting that the legislature um, wishes to um, impose on us.
Okay, thank you. I think those numbers would be good and valuable to submit to myself and Chair Finns.
I will do so. I will do so as uh as soon as possible. Thank you, Chair.
And then actually to all those uh departments that are being affected with the services. Um if you, uh and as I read your testimony, if you are concerned regarding the potential federal implications, um for example, like with DOT, then uh please, uh if you can submit it to the Chair, both Chairs, the potential concerns you have. Thank you. Moving on to the last measure, HB three four five relating to assisted community treatment. Officer, the public defender?
Uh good morning again, uh the uh public defender's office stands on its written comments, and then we are available for questions later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Health?
Yes, good morning, Chair Yamane, and members of the House Committee on Health and Human Services and Homelessness. My name is Michael Champion, I'm the Adult Mental Health Division's Medical Director and testifying on behalf of the department this morning. The department stands on this testimony, commenting on this measure, and providing one clarification at this point. There was a proposed HD one included in our uh testimony, and I just wanted to clarify the intent. The intent was to retain the additions regarding uh appointment of a guardian ad litem uh and not requesting uh attendance at the hearing uh for the subject repetition if a guardian ad litem is uh present. And then also to retain current language in HRS regarding appointment of a public defender and uh or or court-appointed attorney. And I'm available to answer any questions uh that the committee may have about this measure. Mahalo.
Thank you. Um Governor's Coordinator, Mr. Marichi Ge on homelessness?
Uh good morning, Chair. Sorry for um dropping off earlier on the previous measure. Um I signed my testimony supporting the intent and offering comments. Um in particular, I believe that the addition of a guardian ad litem to represent the best interests of the individual in the act petition process is a positive step and defer on the issues relating to removal of the public defender onto the Department Attorney General. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. We, uh members and audience, we have comments submitted by by the Attorney General, comments by the State Judiciary, Hawaii Abuse Coalition in support, comments from the Hawaii Disability Rights Center, um of Christie McPherson in support, uh Hope in support, and Heather Rollar Rodriguez in support. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, uh we will take a recess till eleven thirty to get quorum for voting. Okay, members, thank you. Recession.
Okay, reconvening the Committee on Health Human Services and Homelessness for the purposes of decision making. Oh, my camera, sorry. I am here. For decision making for Thursday, February 11th, 2021, 9:30 a.m., members. Thank you. In advance, okay, moving first bill HB 210 relating to the reduced ignition propensity cigarette program. Members, the recommendation of the chairs to move this measure as an HD one. We need to make some tech amendments and a 7-1-2060 effective. Members, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, vice chair.
Voting on House Bill 210, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair Vice Chair vote aye, Rep. Gates.
Aye.
Rep. Har.
Aye.
Rep. Capella.
Aye.
Rep. LaPresti. Excuse. Rep. Nishimoto. Rep. Ward.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, everybody. Moving on to HB 308 relating to grants for health and human services. Members, the recommendation that chairs to move this as an HD one. Just to highlight, members, this was made in conjunction with discussing it with our federal delegation. Moving forward. So again, the recommendation here, Chair, is to move this as a HD one with a 7-1-2060 effectively. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, vice chair.
Voting on House Bill 308, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. No need to excuse absence of Rep. LaPresti. Any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, members, moving on to HB 311 relating to nursing facility sustainability program. Members, the recommendation of the chairs to move this measure forward. Noting that all parties have worked it out, we will include the Healthcare Association Hawaii's amendments. We will blank out the amounts and note it in the committee report, and we will put a 7-1-2060 effectively. Members, any questions? Seeing none, vice chair.
Voting on House Bill 311, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. No need to excuse absence of Rep. LaPresti, anyone with reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving to HB 339 relating to family court. Members, the recommendation of the chairs to move this measure forward as an HD one, making technical amendments and a 7-1-2060 effectively. Members, any discussion?
Chair.
Yes, represent.
With all due respect, I'm siding with the Supreme Court, who doesn't think this is a very good idea. So I'll be voting no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Representative Har.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the recommendation. I did look at the written testimony of the judiciary, and I think they bring up some very salient points that this really is not a necessary measure, that both the Supreme Court and the ICA put children's and parental rights immediately in the forefront. There is no time delay. The three cases that were stated in the bill, two of those cases did not actually involve child custody. So I just, I don't think that, you know, I don't think this measure is needed at the time. So respectfully, Chair, I'll be voting with reservations.
Okay, thank you. All right. So no, anybody else? Just wanted to note, this is a, this bill will be moving to judiciary, where that would be appropriately dealt with on the Speaker's bill. Okay? Okay, vice chair, please take the vote.
Voting on House Bill 339, Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments. No need to excuse absence of Rep. LaPresti. The reservations of Rep. Har and the no vote from Rep. Ward. Any other reservations? Any other noes? Chair recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Members, moving on to HB 490 relating to crimes against seniors. Members, the recommendation of the chairs to move this capitol caucus measure forward as an HD one. We'll be inserting a savings clause and putting a 7-1-2060 effectively. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, vice chair.
Voting on House Bill 490, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. No need to excuse absence of Rep. LaPresti, anyone with reservations? Any noes? Chair recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Members, moving to HB 706 relating to the issuance of special purpose revenue bonds to assist Waikiki General Hospital. Members, the recommendation of the chairs to move this as an HD one. We're going to be making technical amendments and putting a 7-1-2060 effectively, as well as members. If you look at this measure, it is written with an extremely long, and most of it is unnecessary preamble. So we'll be deleting a portion, a good portion of the preamble, that again, to focus that this is just, this is a spurb measure. Okay? Any discussion? Seeing none, vice chair.
Voting on House Bill 706, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. No need to excuse absence of Rep. LaPresti, anyone with reservations? Anyone with any no votes? Chair recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. Moving on to HB 728 relating to statewide health planning. Members, the recommendation of the chairs to move this measure for in support of the Office of Language Access. We're going to move it as an HD one, changing the effective date to July 1st, 2060. Any discussion, members? Seeing none, vice chair.
Voting on House Bill 728, Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments. No need to excuse absence of Rep. LaPresti, anyone with reservations? Any no votes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Members, moving on to HB 729 relating to homeless. Members, the recommendation is of the chairs to move this measure along, just in case we may need it, depending on the budget situation, to give a potential vehicle if necessary to protect some of the needed services for homeless. So we're going to make technical amendments and a 7-1-2060 effectively. Okay? Members, any discussion?
Sure, I support the chair's decision on that, but I'm rather aghast or amazed that when I ask for the number of homeless, because they expect it's going to spike, they would give a trend line. Now, we've been in a pandemic for 11 months, but they don't know the numbers. If you would gently put that in the committee report, we should expect to make decisions based upon metrics. And that's the basic one. If they want the money to do this stuff, we should know. Otherwise, we're kind of going blindly. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure how that would.
You know, we need to know what the numbers are that they expect to use the money for. And when they don't know what the numbers are, but they We need to know what the numbers are that they expect to use the money for, and when they don't know what the numbers are, but they say it's going to spike, they should have a baseline pre-COVID or at least during COVID every month. It just shocks me that.
So represent, what I'll do is I won't put that in the committee report, but I will make a request to that, to the governor liaison on that, to get you the specific numbers as soon as possible. Okay, thank you. Okay, so the recommendation of the chair again is to move this with technical amendments and a 7-1-2-0-60 effectively. Okay, vice chair.
Voting on House Bill 729, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, knowing the excuse absence of Rep. LaPresti. Any reservations? Any noes? Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Okay, members, moving on to HB 730 relating to Health and Human Services. Members, the recommendation of the chairs to move this measure forward. We do want to put in, we understand that the Department of Health's position as well as DHS, so we'll be putting in language that in case both providers are equal, that they will do a preferable qualification for compatibility to be, basically if they're equal and that those that are Medicaid approved would then get the nod, okay? But we're also, and we're going to modify the front end language, that again, those providers that do not have Medicaid approval will go through the process of becoming Medicaid approved, if they're going to be taking future money from this state. I'm going to put a 7-1-2-0-60 effectively. Members, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, vice chair.
Voting on House Bill 730, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, knowing the excuse absence of Rep. LaPresti. Any reservations? Any noes? Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving to HB 778 relating to health. Members, as you heard the testimony, there is potential concern regarding the unintended consequences at this time. This needs to have further vetting both with the public defender as well as the judiciary, so the chair is going to defer this measure at this time. Okay, moving on to HB 986 relating to newborn hearing screening. Members, the recommendation of the chair is to move this measure as an HD one, just changing the effective dates and technical amendments. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, vice chair.
Voting on House Bill 986, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, knowing the excuse absence of Rep. LaPresti. Any reservation? Any noes? Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. Moving on to HB 987 relating to Hearing and Vision Program. Members, the recommendation of the chair is to move this measure as an HD one, putting technical amendments and changing the effective date to July 1st, 2060. Members, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, vice chair.
Voting on House Bill 987, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, knowing the excuse absence of Rep. LaPresti. Any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is.
Thank you. Moving to HB 1113 relating to non-general funds, the recommendation of the chairs to move this measure as is. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, vice chair.
Voting on House Bill 1113, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, knowing the excuse absence of Rep. LaPresti. Any reservations? Any noes? Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving to HB 1297 relating to state finances. Members, the recommendation of the chair is to move this measure as an HD one. After talking with the Chair of Finance, we'll be taking out in the initial first section regarding the central service expenses, we will be taking out these funds. So the Center for Nursing Special Fund will be taking out the passenger facility charge special fund. We'll take out the Hospital Sustainability Program Special Fund and the Nursing Facility Sustainable Sustainability Program Special Funds. From those funds, that would be now eliminating their exemption to pay into the central services expense of the government through DAGs. Members, we will be putting in an effective date of oh, sorry, we will be keeping everything else the same.
Question.
Represent Har, yes.
So the 5% surcharge will be on all those other than what you just said will remain exempted. Did the ERS get mentioned in that list?
No, they did not touch the ERS.
As I said, all agreements with the IRS say that they've got to use all of their proceeds for the benefit of beneficiaries. The general fund is kind of a watered down beneficiary, so that may need to be further considered.
Yeah, so they have an opportunity then to provide that to the Chair of Finance with their their explanation.
But I consider this bill as a little brother of 1299, which sweeps all special funds into the general fund. So this is a, this is kind of a mild version of that, 25% penalty. So it's going to be interesting to watch because it's very controversial but very necessary, given our financial plight. Thank you.
Again, and as stated earlier, regarding the 10% internal reduction already imposed by the governor. If that moves to five, then it shouldn't be a hit with this five. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, vice chair, please take the vote.
Voting on House Bill 1297, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, knowing the excuse absence of Rep. LaPresti. Any reservations?
Reservations?
Rep. Har votes with reservations, Rep. Capella votes with reservations. Any no votes? Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Moving on to HB 345 relating to assisted community treatment. Members, the recommendation of the chair is to move this as an HD one. We need to make technical amendments. We'll put a 7-1-2-0-60. And members, the chair is going to put in the Department of Health amendments. However, it seems to at this time to be very in line with the current language, but we will note and make sure that their amendments be instituted within the bill, okay? Members, any discussion? Seeing none, vice chair.
Voting on House Bill 345, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, knowing the excuse absence of Rep. LaPresti. Any reservations? Any noes? Chair, recommendation.
Okay, thank you, members. Have a great Valentine's, nice long weekend. A journey.